He wanted me to wait a few minutes, Steve. Yeah, no, no. You have no control over them. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Mr. Stapleton is ready to go now, Steve. Night three, Wakefield Town Meeting. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept or take by eminent domain proceedings, conveyances, or easements from time to time, giving the town the right to construct, maintain drains, sewers, water lines, retaining walls and streets, and to raise an appropriate sufficient sum of money to carry out the purpose of this article to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept or take by eminent domain proceedings, conveyances, or easements from time to time, giving the town the right to construct and maintain drains, sewers, water lines, retaining walls and streets, and to provide therefore that the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $1.
So, your second? Thank you.
This article is an annual article that allows the Board, uh, excuse me, the Town Council to accept and take land conveyances or easements for infrastructure improvements. We generally, we only use this if we have to, and it's, um, I don't think in the last two or three years we have used it at all.
Anybody else on this one? Mr. Sherman, you up on this one?
Yeah, it's a dollar.
That's right, it is a dollar. Get up here. Mr. Mullen, two-thirds.
The Finance Committee recommends spending this dollar.
There being no discussion, the motion before you requires a two-thirds vote. Let's do this in inverse order. Is anyone opposed? Probably gotta yell out, 'cause, uh, I wanna make sure. So, no one is opposed, correct? The motion carries unanimously, Mr. Mullen? All right. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for the collection, disposal, recycling, or composting of refuse, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $1,798,000 for the collection, disposal, recycling, and composting of refuse to carry out the purpose of this article.
Thank you. Mr. Stinson.
Department of Public Works is requesting $1,798,000 for the collection, disposal of refuse, recycling, CRT TVs, white goods, yard waste program, hazardous waste day, and miscellaneous items associated with the maintenance of the Nahat Street Yard Waste Site. Our recycling tonnage has decreased 2.83 percent, and our refuse tonnage has increased 1.71 percent through the first nine months of fiscal year 2018. And as a result, disposal cost of approximately $8,700 more than, is more than anticipated, although our refuse for this particular, for this current fiscal year. Although our refuse tonnage is still substantially lower than in fiscal year 2015, the 15 amount, we need everyone's support in boosting our recycling and reducing our refuse tonnage. Increasing recycling, reducing refuse saves the town dollars that can be utilized for other town programs, such as roadways, sidewalks, repairs, parks, schools, and many other programs. In regards to the recycling markets, they are extremely soft and have been on a decline for the past, uh, four, based on the past four major issues. Much of our recycling goes to China, and they have implemented strict requirements for clean material. It is important to note that town policies on recycling material have not changed, but are being strictly enforced. A decrease in the need of recycling in foreign countries has leveled off, uh, because of their growth rates. Low oil prices have made it easier and cheaper to produce new plastic bottles from raw materials. Packaging producers have found a way to make bottles and cans thinner, requiring less material. It's therefore extremely important that we all do our part and make sure that we are following the recycling rules, and that we are all providing clean recycling in the recycling waste stream. Your participation, support will ensure that our costs are lowered, we protect the environment, and that additional funds are available for, for other programs. DPW would like to thank residents for their dedication towards improving our environment. However, we need your help. Please remember to reduce, reuse, recycle. It is recommended that $1,798,000 be appropriated from tax levy for the purpose of this article.
You're beginning to sound like a commercial there at the end. The Finance Committee met on this and discussed it at length, and we voted unanimously approve this budget, but we also noted that it's pretty much level funded from the year before, or the current year, I should say, for fiscal year 18, so that could be applauded. So, we do hope that you'll vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 14? In the South.
Kathleen Sharpe, 69 Pleasant Street. My question, just from observing recycling days in my neighborhood, is what is being done in Wakefield to heavily encourage people to not only recycle but do it properly? Where I live, it's a mess. People just put everything out.
We do a number of things. We have information on the website all the time, we do mailers, we continually put in advertisement and press releases in the item. We do a grade school recycling program, which is coming up for grade three this month at all the grade schools, and we try to get out as much information as possible. We will during the summer, when we have some seasonal kids come in, they'll go door-to-door and deliver door hangers to residents, encouraging them to recycle. So, they'll, we'll go through a whole bunch of steps during the course of the year.
'Cause right now, we're losing ground.
We are losing ground. I agree with that, yeah.
I mean, I understand that international markets are a big factor here, and that in the, at the end of the day, no matter what people do at their curbs, if there's no market for what they're recycling, it's neither here nor there, but it looks like we are losing ground, so that however it's being communicated must not really be, I have to say, where I used to live in another state, where recycling was picked up every week with the trash, if you didn't have your recycling out properly, the town, the city did not pick up your trash, which was an incentive.
Yeah, it's, we don't pick up recycling or refuse. So, we have one contractor that does refuse and one contractor that does recycling. The contractor that does recycling will not pick up your recycling if you, it's not recycled properly. So, if you don't have clean recycling, if you're throwing in, you can put pizza boxes in, but if they're stained, you don't put those in. You could rip off the pot that, that isn't stained, but most times you throw a stained pizza box in the trash, because that contaminates the load.
Yes.
A lot of people are throwing things into the recycling load that shouldn't, that should not go in there.
But there's no consequence for them?
Uh, we won't pick it up. It'll end up sitting there when they go by, so.
Put it in the trash.
Yeah. Well, if the trash truck comes by first, it would be, it would have to wait a week, which is somewhat of a penalty, so.
Any further discussion? Being no discussion, most before you is that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $1,789,000 for the collection, disposal, recycling, and composting of refuse to carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for roadway improvements, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $350,000 for roadway improvements to carry out the purpose of this article.
So, your second?
Purpose of this article is to supplement our Chapter 90 roadway funding. This year, Chapter 90 funding will provide 31.75 percent of the, of the actual town need. Town, that is down from 37.8 percent provided last year. The town has approximately 110 miles of road, which 90 miles of public ways. The average life expectancy of a road is about 15 years, and therefore, we must improve about six miles of road per year. The estimated cost to improve that six miles of road is $2.1 million. In this current year, we will receive approximately $666,777 in Chapter 90 funding. The number provides for a shortage of $1,433,000. This request will provide road improvements to approximately one mile of public road, although the request does not address the current backlog or to fully, or fully fund the actual six-mile need. It does make a step forward in addressing our roadway improvement need. As important as it is to maintain town buildings and equipment, the roads in town are just as important and a major investment that must be maintained. Roads impact both quality of life and safety of all, all of our residents and businesses. It is anticipated that future annual request to supplement our Chapter 90 funding will be submitted to Town Meeting. The request of this warrant article is to provide $350,000 for additional roadway improvements.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee has been arguing for more money and putting into roads for a number of years. We've been putting about $200,000 a year from, from fiscal year 13 to 18, and the Finance Committee decided that we need to do more. So, what we're, we're really concerned about the conditions of the road. It's become very deplorable. We know of people who have had difficulties in terms of car repairs. It's cost them some money, and the, the condition just does not reflect well on a town in Wakefield. We have a great town, but our roads, sorry, it's just Stinson, but they stink. So, the Finance Committee moves to increase Article 15 to $500,000 from tax levy.
And you have that in writing?
Mr. Mullen, you reviewed this, I saw he wrote it.
He wrote, you wrote. You write? You didn't write? Dan said you did. You knew that? Any discussion on the motion to increase the amount to, under Article 15, from 350,000 to 500,000? In the South?
Bob Mitchell, 6 Balding Street. I think that's a wonderful idea. I'm a very active cyclist, and for cyclists, or especially more for children on scooters and little bicycles, God forbid, one of those little kids hits a pothole, 'cause I know when I ride, especially in a group situation, which is annoying to other drivers, I get that, even when I drive, it can be a pest to see a group of cyclists. Sometimes we have to weave to get out of the way because of potholes and just bad road surfaces, and it'd be a terrible tragedy to see somebody get hurt. It's really a safety issue. So, I think it'd be wonderful if you support this, bring it back to where the Director had previously requested for the level of funding of 500,000. So, I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion, you go up?
Jim Sullivan, Howark Road, Wakefield. I'm a member of the Finance Committee. Through you, Mr. Moderator, maybe someone could explain this article and the money that it's used for in the roads versus earlier in the first night when we were talking about potholes? I know there's a bit of a difference in how this money is used.
Sure.
Mr. Stinson, can you explain the difference?
Yes. The money in the previous, in the operating budget would have been used for maintaining roadways, basically patching. This money here is used for repaving of roadways. As I mentioned, we need to do about six miles a year to stay even. We've been falling behind continually. The need is about 2.1 million a year to stay even. This work, most of it is all done, or all of it's done by contract. We don't have that type of equipment to do the paving. We, we have the roads, we just don't have the equipment to do that. So, the, it's all done by contract. We will do a small part of the work with, when it gets to doing some loam and seed on various areas, once the project, the paving portion, and the curbing repair and all that stuff's done.
And then annually, does it increase every year per mile, the cost?
Yes.
Right, so deferring the maintenance then would be more costly down the road, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm in support of the, the motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We will vote on the amendment, since it's a higher amount, if that carries, that will prevail. All in favor that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $500,000 for roadway improvements? All in favor? All opposed? Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for construction of new sidewalks, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $75,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Second? Second, thank you. Mr. Stinson.
This article is requesting $75,000 for the purpose of installing new sidewalks. Town-funded new sidewalk installation from fiscal year 1995 to fiscal year 2002, in fiscal years 2013 through fiscal year 2018. Last funding amount appropriated was $50,000 in fiscal year 2018. Funds appropriate for this request will provide new sidewalks in areas around schools and, and other heavily trafficked areas. The request for this warrant article is to provide $75,000 for new sidewalk installation.
Like our roads, I think our sidewalks are another area, a safety area, the Finance Committee was really concerned about, as Mr. Stinson just mentioned. We went a number of years without building any new sidewalks. The last, from 15 through 18, we spent $50,000, and the Finance Committee feels that we need to do more than that. There, especially given the fact we have, you know, Brightview, and we've got more people trying to walk. So, the Finance Committee moves to increase Article 16 to $100,000, excuse me, $100,000 from tax levy.
Second? Thank you. Discussion on the increase to, the motion to increase to $100,000? Will be the judge of that.
Tony Longo, 15 Fell Street. The original appropriation before the Board of, the Town Council was $50,000. We did vote to increase it to $75,000, which I think is fair and adequate, given the situation. I urge you not to vote for the $100,000.
But the present motion is for, or the, the present, the, your motion, Mr. Stinson, was for 50, right? 75?
75.
Okay, all right. Okay. Ah, yes. Any further discussion? Mr. Sherman's motion is greater amount. It will be voted on first. If it prevails, it carries. All in favor of the motion to increase Article 16 for sidewalks to $100,000? All opposed? Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from Water Enterprise and Sewer Enterprise or other available funds a sufficient sum of money for the replacement of the Public Works' mobile radio system, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town raise and appropriate $125,000 with $85,000 from tax levy and the sum of $20,000 from Sewer Enterprise account, and the sum of $20,000 from the Water Enterprise account, to carry out the purpose of this article.
Mr. Stinson.
Purpose of this article is to upgrade the Public Works' communication system and provide for interoperable communications between town emergency responders and other agencies. Under the Homeland Security Act of 2002, DPW is classified as a first responder and plays a significant role in numerous town emergencies. There are a number of issues related to the current Public Works' system that will be addressed with the approval of this article. Current radio system resides on a low-band frequency, preventing communications with other town agencies and partnering agencies. Currently, the police, fire, and school departments reside on either an analog or digital high-band frequency. Current radio equipment in many cases is not functional or does not function properly, requiring the replacement of equipment even if we remain with a low-band frequency. The existing equipment limits the ability to transmit important communications related to daily operations, emergency response, and employee safety-related issues. The current low-band frequency is not conducive to built-up locations and penetrating metal and concrete structures. Often, we, when we're in our sewer stations or water stations through dense, which are dense objects or dense objects, this radio, the current radio system will not work. The upgrade of the existing system is critical of Public Works' is to meet the emergency needs of the community, residents, and businesses, and communicate it efficiently and effectively, ensuring the safety of staff and others. It is recommended that the town, the sum of $85,000 be appropriated from tax levy, $25,000 be appropriated from Water Enterprise account, and $25,000, I'm sorry, $20,000 be appropriated from Water Enterprise account, and $20,000 be appropriated from the Sewer Enterprise account.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this one. We concur with Mr. Stinson's analysis.
Any discussion? In the South?
Dennis Clarity, One Harvest Road. Mr. Stinson, is there anyone in your department that doesn't have a cellphone?
There are many people that do not have cellphones. We don't provide cellphones to only required employees.
That wasn't a question, thank you. I mean, I think it'd be a lot cheaper just to get a few cellphones for the people that don't have them, if you need to get in touch with these people. And secondly, you've become an extension of the Homeland Security, you said?
We have been since 2002.
So, they can nationalize our DPW and do what they want with it?
We, we have agreements with, we have a agreement with, across the state, for municipal support for Public Works. That was adopted back in the, around 2010 or 12.
All right, all right. I, I don't really care if Homeland Security can-
Well, then you can't ask him a question if you don't care, okay?
Okay.
It's kinda how this works. I wanna ask you a question, but I don't really care what you have to say.
If you let me finish my sentence, I-
Well, yeah, that was kinda my point. You have to let him finish.
All right. I don't care that Homeland Security can't get a hold of our DPW, and I think it'd be a lot cheaper just to get some cellphones for the people that don't have them. Thank you.
Couple things-
No, 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 there's no question. There's no question. You're, you're doing well up until now. Any further discussion on the motion under Article 17? Be no discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate $125,000 with $85,000 from tax levy, the sum of $20,000 from the Sewer Enterprise account, the sum of $20,000 from the Water Enterprise account. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for water main improvements, and to determine whether the appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town appropriate the sum of $4,085,000 for the purpose of water main improvements, including design, construction, and other costs related thereto. And to raise this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Select, uh, sorry, well, it is Board of Selectmen in the article, so I'll read it that way, is authorized to borrow the said sum under and pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, which may include the local water system assistance program of the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority. And to issue bonds and notes of the town, therefore, provided that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds and notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to this payment, applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to carry, to pay costs by a like amount to carry out the purpose of this article.
Second?
This article is requesting $4,085,000 for water main improvements. Water main improvement program began in 1992, and has resulted in water mains being replaced or rehabilitated on 98 streets. It is important that the town continue this program of water main improvements so that we can provide a reliable water supply to the community. Many of the town's water mains are in excess of 70 years old, and in many cases are online. Over the years, corrosion, tuberculosis have caused water main failure, significantly reduced capacity, and more importantly, reduced water pressure to homes. This warrant article will improve 1.7 to 2.4 miles of water main through structural lining and/or replacement. The improvements will improve pressure, improve fire flow, improve water quality, address major water mains that are susceptible to water main breaks due to age and material, and reduce purchased water cost with the MWRA. This project will be funded by borrowing, with a portion of the funding coming from MWRA's Water System Assistance Program, which is an interest-free borrowing program. It is recommended that the town appropriate the sum of $4,085,000 for the purpose of water main improvements, and that the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow the said sum under and pursuant to Gen, General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority.
Mr. Stinson? Or Mr. Sherman, sorry.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this. Clearly, our water mains need to be repaired, as we've seen on, see on Franklin just recently, and up on Green Street, so we encourage everybody to vote in favor of this article.
Discussion on the motion under Article 18? There being no discussion, this requires a two-thirds majority. We will vote in the inverse process. Is anyone opposed? Nobody's got your hand up, right? Anybody? Shout out if you're opposed. I don't think there's an opposition, Tony. All right, Mo, you're opposed? Are you just being funny?
No, you have to, somebody has to say in favor.
Yeah, all in favor? All opposed? Well, no, if nobody's opposed, they're all in favor, Dan. Oh, boy. Stick to the numbers. Okay, Mr. Stinson, nice job. Article 19, see if the vote, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen in the name and behalf of the town to execute a lease of up to 99 years with the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority for all or any portion of the land premises, easements, rights of way, and other rights in Wakefield comprising the former Newburyport Branch Railroad right-of-way held by the MBTA, some or all of which was acquired by the MBTA by an order of taking dated February 16, 1977, and recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds at Book 13156, Page 34, for the purposes of establishing and constructing and operating a multi-use rail trail with all the available amenities as set forth in the article. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town authorize the Town Council in the name and behalf of the town to execute a lease of up to 99 years with the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, the MBTA, for all or any portion of the land, premises, easements, rights of way, and other rights in Wakefield comprising the former Newburyport Branch Railroad right-of-way held by the MBTA, some or all of which was acquired by the MBTA by order of taking dated February 16, 1977, and recorded in Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds at Book 13156, Page 3- at Book one-three-one-five-six, Page thirty-four, for the purposes of establishing, constructing, operating, and maintaining a multi-use rail trail with the related facilities and improvements for non-motorized transportation, open space, and recreation purposes, including walking, running, road and mountain, bicycling, wheelchairs, accessibility, cycling, equipment, inline skaters, scooters, tricycles, rolling backpacks, strollers, cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, and other forms of active and passive recreation, and for all other purposes for which rail trails are now or hereafter may be used in the Commonwealth to carry out the purposes of this article.
Is there a second?
Thank you. At a recent town council meeting, the Board of, the town council mentioned that it was an exciting time to be living in Wakefield. Taking the next step in this long-planned rail-to-trail is part of that excitement. Article nineteen before you tonight simply requests that this body authorize the town council to enter into a ninety-nine-year lease with the MBTA for the use of the rail corridor for trail. The joint Wakefield-Linfield trail is four-point-three-five miles long. One-point-eight-two miles of that is in Wakefield, the paved portion of which is twelve, I'm going to do the PowerPoint at the end, don't worry, the paved portion of which is twelve feet wide and will have grass strips of two feet on each side. The projected cost is nine-point-two million and would be funded through the Transportation Improvement Program, or what we call TIP, and it's slated for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, which is really only two years away. After years of planning, including public forums, we are at the twenty-five percent planned design stage with the MBT, with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Twenty-five percent planned design means that the basic horizontal and vertical alignment of the trail are established, and the impacts to the right-of-way are quantified. Wakefield, teams of engineers from MassDOT have visited Wakefield and Linfield to review the line and affected street crossings. It is important to note that the detailed elements of the trail, crossings, benches, fencing, landscaping, and parking, will be presented and finalized in the next phase. This article merely allows the town council to enter into the lease. The key issue here is that MassDOT desires to see a commitment from Wakefield before moving forward with further design efforts. In other words, they're not going to spend a lot more time with us if we're not willing to go forward this step tonight. I envision, and there will be, more community meetings on this as we move forward, and the council requests favorable action. I do have a very, very brief PowerPoint presentation just to talk a little bit about what we talked about today. So here's the line, starting really across from Galvin, and going across the line, crossing into Linfield, and going somewhere around here where that's all nebulous where it's going to end in Linfield, but the Wakefield portion is pretty well set. So what we're really talking about, or what we'll be coming up with, is how the street crossings are going to be, what signage there will be, how they will be laid out, what will happen. There are a number of street crossings in Wakefield. All of that detailed design will be forthcoming. What is a rail trail going to look like? What kind of fencing is there going to be? What kind of shrubbery is there going to be? Is it going to be a fence like that, or like this? Or, those look like hydrangeas to me, I guess. So we really don't know what's going to happen. That will be handled at the next stage as we continue to meet with the abutters, so there's continuity through the line. That's the next stage of this project. How will the crossings look? How will the entrances to the different streets look? Will there be, will there be plantings there? Or will there be mile markers? Go back. Will there be mile markers so people can see where they are? All of those things will come out in the design, and we've been meeting with MassDOT. Mr. Stinson and I have been in there a number of times, have met with our team of engineers a number of times. These are things that will be happening, and there will be public forums for them. What will the crossings look like? And this is the last slide. This is a concept sketch of what the head of the trail will look like up right across the street here from the Galvin School. There'll be a grassy area, there'll be some parking, which will be nice, and then people can take off on the trail. This is a great, great project and program for the town. There's been a lot of excitement. I think I see Dot Halpin in the crowd here tonight. Dot, this has been a long time coming, so I'm happy that we're going to the next stage here, or with this body's approval, going to the next stage. It's important to note that Linfield actually did vote for this at their town, town meeting a while ago. The margin was not what I would like to see here, so let's make sure we have a bigger margin here tonight. Thank you.
You're not up, right? Mr. Scott?
Mr. Moderator, Jim Scott, Seventy-Five Elm Street. I am one-hundred percent in back of this, and I'd love to see it happen. I know I was on one of the first committees about fifteen years ago. I went in the State House. My son Kevin was on this committee, and seems to me the big holdup is not Wakefield. I don't think there's any resistance, but I think there's big problems in Linfield. At that town meeting, it was one vote, and I know there's an organized resistance. Steve, do you have any idea, or maybe I see Dot here, does she know what's going on there?
I, I, I think I see the tide turning there a little bit. Mr. Stinson and I intended a forum informational session, much like the ones we've had here in Wakefield and Linfield a couple of months ago, and it seemed to be moving in the right direction at that evening. So we are in this together, and MassDOT is working with both communities.
Now, is, is there anything else they can do to oppose this? Can they bring it to the, the whole town to vote on it, or that one vote?
They may do that. That's, I think, what, they may do that, but that's their, their deal, not ours. We would, we, we're still going to try to proceed on our end.
What, what would happen if they don't approve it? Is it going to stop at Linfield?
It's possible. MassDOT would say it's not worth it. Or they may just do the Wakefield, then.
Okay, thank you.
In the North?
Dot Halpin, five-forty-one Lowell Street, obviously speaking in favor of the article. Various groups of people have worked on this since the nineteen eighties and nineties and never were able to get it going, but back in two thousand four, the Board of Selectmen at the time established the Rail-to-Trail Committee, and we've been working on the project since then. My husband Emmett, an avid bicycle rider at the time, myself, Jim Scott, and Kevin, along with a group of other interested bicyclists and residents, started to get our purpose known by going to the festival by the lake, and we always had very, very good public reaction. Through the years, we also worked with town officials here and the Recreation Path Committee in Linfield, and came up with the idea of a path starting in Wakefield and going through Linfield. So fourteen years later, after working with several state senators and representatives and the MBTA, having a feasibility study completed and paid for by state funds, and several public meetings, the town's design and engineering consultant has put forth the plan, which Steve very nicely had the PowerPoint for. And they're planning to implement this, and we find ourselves at another very important step in this long process. The ninety-nine-year lease, along with the construction that would be funded by state and federal transportation funds, are there for us to utilize. As mentioned in the article, the path is for the use of people of all ages, whether you walk your baby carriage, ride a bike alone or with your children, or want to get some fresh air in your wheelchair. This town has a chance to add an enhancement to our economic, environmental, educational, and recreational profile. If approved tonight, we can move forward to join the other towns that have put through their paths and are currently enjoying those benefits. I urge you to vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
In the South?
Bob Mitchell, Six Balding. More for the folks who may not be sure how they feel about this issue, and for a little bit of a brief education, this is not the first bicycle path in Wakefield. At the northern end of the lake, if you circled the lake years ago, when you get to the north end of the lake, if it was mud season, basically any time other than summer in New England, you were going through ruddy, grass, it was pretty mucky, there was water, sometimes three or four inches deep if you were pushing a baby in a baby carriage. You didn't go around that end of the lake. You didn't do, do the full circle, or, or in any recreation that you enjoyed, just walking or cycling or rollerblading, whatnot. Out of litigation with the prior owners of that property, there was funding for a bicycle path. I was on the, on the pathway committee that met in Town Hall, and we designed that pathway as a great group, and a lot of people don't realize why that pathway is there, but that is a similar type of construction to this, and it's been a resounding success for people in our community and people in other community, and I appreciate that other communities have resources like this, although I may not be a citizen of another community. When I go there, I get to enjoy their recreational activities, so I think it's just good for our community and good for New England area in general, so I wholeheartedly ask you to support this motion. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Donaco.
Paul Donaco, Seventeen Wyler Street. We can go back to when I was first on the planning board, because that's when I first met Dot and Emmett Halpin. They were, Emmett was an avid cyclist back then, and the first thing he said to me is, "Do we have your support on the rail-to-trail?" I said, "Sure, where we want to put it." So from then on, it's been a push by a small group of people to try to get this accomplished. We are there now. We have the, the design. We have funding. We just need now to obtain the land from the MBTA. So in this case, I'm going to ask you to full-heartedly support this article and support the rail-to-trail at this point in order for us to move on and get this accomplished. It's going to come out looking fantastic, and it'll be a nice entryway from Main Street across from the Galvin, all the way to Salem Street and beyond, so this is a great thing for the town. So please, favorable action.
Any further discussion? Motion before you is that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen in the name and on behalf of the town to execute a lease up to ninety-nine years with the MBTA for all or any portions of the land, premises, easements, and rights. Rights in Wakefield comprising the former Newburyport Branch for the purposes set forth by Mr. Mayo, including rolling backpacks. All in favor? All opposed? I think those are coolers. All right. We are flying. Here we go.
Right, thank you.
Did you say Jinx? It's Hadfield, he'll slow us down. All right. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to amend Section one-ninety dash seventy-three of the zoning bylaws concerning the fees charged by the zoning Board of Appeals as follows: By deleting subsection A and replacing it with the following. I'm not going to read these all. You have, they're in the, they're in the booklet, the changes, and we, I'm sure they'll be discussed. Or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Hadfield?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town amend the zoning bylaws as described to carry out the purpose of this article.
Second?
Thank you.
Mr. Hadfield?
Article twenty represents a long overdue increase in the filing fees necessary to ensure that the cost of the administrative function of filing for zoning relief in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals is borne by the applicants and not the taxpayers. The last time these fees were reviewed was in two thousand and two, sixteen years ago. A recent review of the costs of a hearing, including advertising, postage, and staff, indicate that the average hearing costs about five-hundred dollars. In some instances, the petitioner is paying a mere hundred-and-fifty dollars for filing and postage. In fact, a recent hearing for a residential variance cost seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to complete, yet the applicant only paid three-hundred-and-twenty-two, leaving a four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-dollar shortfall that must be covered out of our tax levy. At the end of the fiscal year, the remaining costs of the Board of Appeals often require a reserve fund transfer. While we hope we have rectified the budget side of this account in Article one last week, the revenue side is still a factor. Based on fiscal year two thousand seventeen applications last year, a very busy year, these proposed changes would have produced fees of approximately thirty-thousand dollars. Under the current fee structure, though, we had to transfer four thousand out of the reserve fund to cover expenses for that fiscal year. In year-to-date fiscal two thousand eighteen, which we're in now, we have collected fees of fifty-eight-hundred dollars against expenses of thirteen thousand, so we're on track to require another reserve fund transfer of five to seven thousand dollars. We feel that in a normal year, these proposed fee changes will make the Board of Appeals Department self-sustaining. To further quantify what these changes would mean for some of the recent larger projects in town, we offer a couple examples. At six-forty Main Street, which is near the junction adjacent to Dunkin' Donuts, the cost of that hearing was fourteen-hundred-and-twenty dollars. We collected seven-hundred-and-eighty-four in fees. Under the new fees, fifteen-hundred would have been collected, so it would have broken even. Another one, sixty-one Valley Street and Five Heart Street, it's in a neighborhood, neighborhood business area that's been converted to some housing. That cost nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars for the hearing. We collected thirteen-eighty under the current fees, but nineteen-fifty would have been collected with the new fees, so again, it would have broken even. Quite simply, the applicants of the project should bear the cost of obtaining the zoning relief they seek, not the taxpayers. We respectfully request your support for this article.
Mr. Sherman?
The Finance Committee unanimously agreed with that point. We do these reserve fund transfers, and we don't like them, so please support this article.
Mr. Spalding, Planning Board. Hey, I might add, there were handouts for the next bunch of articles, which are pretty dense, and Mr. Reviss put together a translation into civilian language, if you will. So hopefully you grabbed one of those on the way in. They will help out on the next bunch of articles, and with this one. Mr. Spalding?
Thank you. The Planning Board recommends favorable action.
In the South?
Bob McLaughlin, three-seventy-six Water Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I've got a couple of questions from Mr. Hadfield. One of them is, I mean, I was on the planning board for a few years, and I'm trying to figure out what the expenses, why, why it costs so much money for the ZBA to push these projects through, and, and why we're not covering all the costs. I know that, I know there's a secretary that is taking minutes. I know there's advertising costs, and there's mailing costs, and I also know, and maybe this is a question in addition to this, is on page ten, there's contractual services in the town budget this year for twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars, and I was curious, what is, is that for maybe traffic advisors? Could you explain that, Bonnie?
Do you know that, Dave?
I do not.
You do?
I do not.
You do not. Mr. Mayo, do you know that?
It's on page ten.
I mean, does that-
That's, that's in the Board of Appeals budget?
Yes.
That is for all of the costs of the, of the Board of Appeals filings? That, that's not for a traffic engineer or consultants? That's for the cost of advertising, staff, what have you? We just put it all together.
Correct. So what, what they're asking is, is to increase the applicant's fees by either double or triple. A lot, a lot of those fees are either doubled or tripled.
Yes, in some instances, the advertising cost alone is four, four hundred, five hundred dollars. It's also the cost of mailing to the, to the notices out and what have you. So oftentimes, the big, the big driver is the advertising cost.
I see. Is there any, like the building department, I know that they, they kick back money into the town treasury above and beyond what it costs to operate that, that department.
Well, we don't use that term, but-
I'm sorry. Well, they-
Refund.
Refund.
Transfer legally.
So I guess my question is, is currently, does the, does the Zoning Board of Appeals, do they put any money back into the town treasury at the end of the year?
Yes. Well, well, they do collect money for fees, but that is much less than the cost of the function of the appeals process.
Okay.
I guess, I think we mentioned year-to-date this year, fifty-eight-hundred, where costs of hearings were thirteen thousand.
All right. I guess I'm, I'm still a little confused, because I, you know, I'm just looking at it, I'm a, I have my own business, and they have a secretary. I understand they have advertising fees, and, and they've got mailing fees. It just seems like an awful lot of, it doesn't seem like a lot of overhead for the amount of money that they're pulling in, but anyway, that, that's my, that's my questions. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion under Article twenty? In the South?
Sarah Guerin, Forty-Six Valley Street. In May town meeting last year, we overwhelmingly passed a zoning bylaw amendment to allow an art craft studio accessory use by special permit, and the last time the ZBA fees were established, this did not exist in Wakefield. The article is written, does not recognize the intent of that art craft studio bylaw, which was to help foster artists by, and one of the big parts of that is financial ease. Right now, by default, a fee would be around two-hundred dollars to apply for a special permit in this instance, but it will go up to by four-fifty. permit in this instance, but it will go up to by four fifty. And at that cost, artists, which would be rare in this circumstance, would likely be discouraged from ever applying. I move that the pending motion be amended by adding the following words to subsection B to C. Art craft studio accessory use fifty dollars, and then change the currently proposed section C to D.
Do you have that in writing?
I do.
Give that to Mr. Mullen for his perusal. this will be voted separately to amend? Yeah, okay. Just double checking. Don't look at me like I'm that stupid. All right. The amendment before you, if you have your handy, Mr. Revis, handout, or if you have the article itself in the booklet. Let's look down now. Let's make sure we got this. Down to subsection one, at the end of the first paragraph above B, the movement intends to add comma, and adding the following words in B paren two paren C. Then we move down to two at the bottom of the page. Nicely done motion, by the way. And what happens is, we, between B, C now becomes D, any other special permit required by this chapter, and C shall say art slash craft studio accessory use fifty dollars. Okay? Any discussion on the motion under Article twenty? There being no discussion. This is a...
I'd like to add something.
Right under the wire.
Dave Hadfield, twenty-three Buttonet Road. I mean, the cost for any of these are the same. So, you know, keeping, you know, adding another section just for a specific use doesn't really help the, you know, the town's budget. They're still going to be, the costs are going to be the same, the postage, the advertising, the copies, the notifications. So the town's still going to have to try to cover that or transfer funds to cover it. So I would recommend keeping it with the original motion.
In the South.
Matthew Lowery, eighty-six Green Street. I support this amendment. I know the town is working to bolster the arts in town, and I think this is a worthy cause to help artists get established in town. I know that anyone who would be applying for this would be a Wakefield resident. It wouldn't be someone from out of town. So we're basically helping someone who's already paying taxes in town and giving them a slight break. So I support this article. I support this amendment.
On the amendment?
Yeah.
Matthew Jewitt, thirty Byron Street. I also would support this amendment. I have some additional concern about how this article, the overall article, is drafted in terms of other...
Get away, get away.
I understand. But this is one facet of where it impacts, and we've now, as Mr. Hadfield's pointed out, we've pulled out one subset, and it makes it a little more complicated. But I think there's several others also. And I would support this amendment, but I think we have other places we really should be considering also.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on the amendment before you? The amendment before you is to amend, as I just pointed out, adding, add, and adding the following words in B to sub two, sub C, and C would be art slash craft studio accessory use fifty dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Now, back to the main motion, which now includes the amendment. Any further discussion on the main motion to change?
Back on the main motion.
Back on the main motion.
Okay. Could you, Mr. Hadfield, could you clarify just a little bit in terms of how the fee structure works? And what I'm, what I'm looking at, if you look at the current application, and then you look at the article, it's unclear to me what fees you're actually paying if you're going to see the fine people at the board of appeals. So you have the application fee, and then which of the other fees are you paying on top of that when you go in?
So it depends on what you're applying for. All applications pay that two fifty plus, plus two dollars for the butters, and that's again for copies and postage.
Okay. So the current, the current situation is that, and I understand these are really old fees, but the current situation is that you pay one hundred dollars, and that includes mailing to the first twenty butters. The proposed one goes from a hundred to two hundred and fifty and does not include any mailing fees. So in my case, just that one item, a hundred and fifty-five dollars to almost four hundred dollars. And that's just if I'm dealing with a dimensional issue. So if you're a non-conforming property, and you need to change to a ramp, for instance, or something like that, I mean, I actually don't have any issues with the increases of fees to the, like, the ones you cited, the larger projects that get way upside down. I think, having been to several board of appeals meetings, I appreciate how hard you guys work. But the board of appeals spends a disproportionate amount of time working their butts off, trying to take care of one seventy-five North Ave or Brightview or any number of these other projects. And it feels to me, the way this is structured, is that there's essentially a cost shift that goes back, that penalizes the residential homeowner who needs something minor, like a shed or a deck, and it's non-conforming. They're typically in and out in a night, or maybe two if there's something that they didn't have together, whereas you guys spend months and hours and hours and hours on these big projects. And I feel like the application fees that are proposed don't really represent the amount of effort that you guys put in and where it goes to. So I'm concerned about the non-conforming properties, which are a lot of them, that suddenly have a, by the time you add to the fees, the certified plot plan, and the twenty-five copies and everything else, you're talking about a pretty significant amount of money for what could be a pretty minor request. And I have concern that that doesn't feel very equitable to me. So the only one I really, I almost wonder if there was a way to restructure this, so you had a residential component that stayed a little bit lower in cost, and you had a non-residential permit fee that reflected how the resources go out. I understand recouping the mailing costs. I also, when we're talking about posting the meetings, you have to post twice, right? Prior to the meeting?
In the paper, yes.
Okay. Typically, you have multiple hearings that are being held in each posting, right?
Typically, yes.
So when you're talking about the costs, are you dividing it out by the number of people who are, or are you saying, well, we have this four hundred dollar posting cost per item? Because that's not how it really works, right? You're paying for the ad once, even if you have eight hearings, or if you have two hearings. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. I mean...
Okay.
Yes. But when we collect the fees, when people file in the building department, we could get two or three or five or six. So we don't know at the time that they're filing, how many we're going to have to advertise and exactly how much that ad's going to cost.
Steve can answer that.
Pardon?
Absolutely. I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. But even if a hearing takes one night or twenty nights, there's still all of those other costs that go on.
And I understand that.
And that's what these reflect, is trying to make sure that all of that other stuff, we at least break even, regardless of how many hearings it takes.
Okay.
Steve, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to add a couple of things. I think one thing is, and I agree with you, that the cost of the advertising is a big driving force here. But if there are six hearings in one night, that ad grows longer.
Yeah, I understand.
So the cost is more.
Yeah, I understand.
Because there's a column of range. The other thing is, I think the board of appeals did take that into consideration, because if you note that residential variances are a lot less than commercial, than non-residential.
Again, I think that it's very disproportionate. They aren't a lot less. When you look at something like a...
One minute.
A North Ave versus somebody trying to put a deck on or put a shed in the corner, you're talking about really a few hundred dollars. I mean, we raised the fees for the building permits, and those reflect back, and then you get it back in the tax, in the taxes moving forward. For me, I think that this is, again, I think that this, the way this is done, I would rather see us move for indefinite postponement, or refer it back to committee to figure out what is really more equitable to the taxpayers and the residents as opposed to, because I don't disagree with increasing the fees on the non-residential stuff. Okay?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't make it.
Is there, is, what would be the most economical point and way to proceed on that, on either of those? I'm open to either, you know, going for indefinite postponement or referring it to committee to try and get back and address the inequity.
Hi, Tom Mullen.
Without shutting it down, because I'm not against the article.
Well, Tom Mullen, Town Council. The most economic way is just to say what you did, which is you oppose this and you hope people vote against it. That would have the same effect as you're voting, as you're making a motion now for indefinite postponement. You mentioned that earlier. I wouldn't recommend you go the indefinite postponement route. You're just opposed to this article. And if it's voted down, then it can come back within two years with the approval of the planning board, or without the approval of the planning board any time after that. And that gives plenty of time for whatever tinkering with it that you want to be done.
Okay. I disagree with your interpretation of what I'm saying. So I missed, so maybe I wasn't clear. My concern is, I think there's an equity between the residents and, between the residential side and the non-residential side. And I would like that addressed before we vote on the article, because once we vote on the article, if it goes forward, it's in. And I don't think we have addressed the concerns.
Well, you...
If it votes down, then we can go back.
I got this. No, no, you have addressed it, and you've raised the issue, and you got a response from Mr. Hadfield. So either you make a motion, you've had five minutes...
Well, I didn't get a response in terms of how the residential versus the, fine, why don't I, why don't I make a motion for indefinite postponement?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. All right. Discussion on a motion for indefinite postponement.
As I mentioned earlier in opening remarks, we've had reserve fund transfers on this, on the board of appeals for the last several years. I had to go back, look at the history. And I'd rather not have two more years of reserve fund transfers. So I encourage people to vote against indefinite postponement.
Dennis Clarity. I think what the gentleman is trying to say is that he wants a more equitable arrangement. And instead, that it be done on like a percentage basis. If your project is like zero to a thousand dollars, that's a hundred bucks, or whatever it is, whatever the fee is, I don't, or if it's for three and a half million dollars, that it should be perhaps one percent or three thousand dollars or something. I don't know. But I think that's what he's trying to say. He just wants to be fair about this.
Good.
Thank you.
In the North.
Jim McBane, twenty-three Quarter Street. Recently, in the last year or more, we've had quite a few large projects. And as spoken here, basically, there is some concern about maybe the larger projects ought to support this. But we've also had years where we had only a few large projects. So in those years, when it's mostly backyard additions or garages or something like that, is what happens then is, you're going to be short again. So I understand how we're trying to balance this out, but the reality all depends on the type of projects we have throughout the year. If they were balanced between large and small, then maybe we'd balance out. But those years when, in fact, there are just small projects, we're going to be back drawing funds, basically, out of the general funds or out of the budget, basically. So understand there's a, it changes. We don't know what the mix is going to happen each year. And the finances coming back from those will differ each year. I understand, you know, as pointed out here, that basically people, at least in the town, that have a porch or something else, or a garage addition, it's just a small thing. And like not to weigh them down with that. But you can't depend every year that a larger project's going to support the smaller projects because they have a less fee. That's it.
In the North.
Suzie Vayor, fifteen Aborn Ave. I think you brought up a lot of interesting points about the inequity, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm not sure that indefinitely, whatever the word was...
Postponing.
Postponing, thank you. Makes sense either, because it just is going to draw out the process. Is the best-case scenario, if we don't vote yes, and you vote it down because we want the equity to be taken into consideration, is the best case bringing it to the next town meeting for consideration, or does something happen sooner than that, since we don't, we don't have a motion with an alternative?
Mr. Mullen.
Well, anybody here can make a motion to amend the main motion that is now before you.
But you have to have a plan in your head of what that looks like.
That's right.
Right. Nobody, I don't think we have that.
Right.
So then, if it gets voted down, can it come to town meeting again at the next town meeting?
Yeah. Any zoning amendment which is voted unfavorably can come back to town meeting. The rule, however, is that it can't come back for two years unless the planning board recommends it.
And what about indefinite postponement?
Indefinite postponement would have the same consequence as a negative vote, which is why I urge the gentleman not to make this motion. It just delays things. Both of those are considered unfavorable action. Either a negative vote or a vote for indefinite postponement would mean that this article could not come back in substantially the same form for two years without planning board approval.
So as long as the planning board would agree that addressing that inequity made sense, they could bring something back?
They could.
As long as they approve it?
At any town meeting. That's right.
But there's no guarantee that would happen?
Well, no.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lieber.
Mr. Mullen, this will probably be for you.
Mr. Mullen, this'll probably be for you before you sit all the way down. One of the questions that was raised was about referring to a committee. If the, if the indefinite postponement is failed, and it is moved to a committee, the committee can then repre- can the committee represent it within the two years without the bar, since it will not have been negatively disposed?
Right, but currently, there's no motion for committee.
Yeah, if there were a motion to commit, or a motion to refer to any committee, that is not considered unfavorable action. And that means that anybody, not necessarily that committee, anybody could bring substantially the same article before town meeting in the future, without the need of planning board approval.
Okay. Mr. Mullen, that is, so that's what I was trying to ask when I asked. So what I would like to do is withdraw my, my motion for indefinite postponement, and make a motion to refer it to committee. I was not trying to hold this up. What I was trying to do was get it more equitable and thought out. That said, I don't think it would matter either way, because I think the planning board would resubmit it and approve it, because that's, I think everybody has the right intent here. I just would like to get it right.
Mr. Mullen?
So I'd like to withdraw my motion, however I do that, and I'd like to make a motion to refer it to committee, and thank you for making the semantics difference.
You have to specify which committee. Want to give them some choices?
Mr. Hadfield, what committee would you recommend I make, put that to?
ZBA.
That's, that would be fine. That makes sense to me. Why don't I...
Do we need that in writing?
And I'm happy to do that, if I need to do it that way.
Yeah, you'd want to come down and put that in writing?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, motion for indefinite postponement is withdrawn, and the motion before you is to refer Article 20 to the ZBA for further study. Is there a second? Discussion on this motion. There being no discussion, the motion before you, which only requires a majority, correct, Mr. Mullen? Is to move, refer Article 20 to the ZBA for further study. All in favor? All opposed? Uh, motion carries. Well, I'm going to count this. Yeah, tellers, yeah, oh, right, all you characters down here. Right, okay. Who, who's up for tonight? The originals still here? Oh, no, we got a sub. All right. Now Julie, when their hands up in the air, you count that as a yes, and then there'll be no. All right, all in favor of the motion to refer Article 20 to, to the ZBA for further study? Put your hand in the air, and make sure it is counted. Okay.
Ten? Eleven in the South? Twenty-five in the Center.
Twenty-five. All opposed, raise your hand. Okay, you got to count yourselves, too. Make sure you...
Fifteen in the North?
Sixteen in the Middle?
Fourteen in the South?
What is it? Yeah. Forty-six, forty-five. Motion is referred to the ZBA committee. I'm supposed to call you up, you know?
Oh, I'll wait.
No, oh, God, you won't wait? Are you kidding me? Article 21, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws as set forth in your long, long, long article. Pardon? Okay, okay. You have a point, if you have a motion, you don't, that's not a point of order, that's a motion. You have to make your motion up here. Okay.
Nobody's read these.
No, no, no. You are.
Oh, Dennis Clarity, one harvest wrote.
Okay, and you have a motion?
Yes. I, I motioned that we lay these upon the table, adjourn, or whatever.
Well, no, 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 one or the other.
Lay them upon the table? I don't know. Tom, I would like to have an opportunity to read. I mean, we're a legislative body, and I'd like to, you know, before I pass a law, I'd like to have an opportunity to read it and find out what's in it.
Okay.
What, how do I get this opportunity?
So you want to adjourn?
Well, I just want, I mean, adjourn, or if, if I lay this upon the table, that means it's... What does that mean, Tom?
Mr. Mullen, could you interpret that for Mr. Clarity?
I, I take it you want to stop deliberating on these articles, so that you can read them, think about them, and come back to deliberate later? Is that it?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I think you'd be looking to adjourn tonight's meeting, then, to a definite date and time.
And that would give people the opportunity to find out what they're doing here? I mean, there's a lot of rules and laws in here.
You're going to make a motion, or what are you going to do here?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Okay. And you're, now you can speak to that.
Ladies and gentlemen...
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Who seconded it? Okay.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you are a legislative body. You, I, I mean, if Washington does these types of things, I mean, they pass laws without even reading them, and we laugh at them. I mean, don't make yourself a laughingstock. There's a lot of stuff in here, and some of it is pretty intense, like charging you $200 or $300 a day, a town official can do that. It doesn't say who the town official is, or what, what he wants you to do. And you're giving up a lot of your rights and, you know, I mean, by possibly passing laws, that you have no idea what you're doing. I mean, effectively, from what I understand, it would be turning a town meeting into a steamroller. For instance, if you pass a law saying that you have to walk backwards through the square, and then some, you know, you're at work, and you read about it the next day, and you call up your friends, and you go to a town meeting. But what you have to do, you, you can't file a motion for reconsideration. What you have to do is go to the town meeting, and get them to vote by two-thirds to listen to you. I mean, these are the people that thought walking through the square backwards was a good idea. And, uh, and it's just going to turn town meeting into a steamroller. You won't be able to do anything.
Mr. Clarity, I need your motion to be to a certain time and date. Uh... Yeah, like, next Monday? Help me out here.
I don't know what's convenient for the people here. I would...
Continuing? No.
I would withdraw my motion, then, and I will make a motion to lay it upon the table. Um, is there a second for, is there a second for that?
Is there a second? Hold on, hold on, that's my job. Is there a, I want to see, is there a, can we lay it, lay them on ta- we can lay them on the table, right? Yeah, but...
I hope you haven't a chance to read.
Yeah, yeah. Laying it on the table means that we just move on to the next article, and as your, my concern is that you have the same concern for all the next changes.
Okay, then I'll change my motion. I motioned that we lay the next five articles upon the table.
Well, no, you can't. You can only do one at a time.
Oh.
Okay, so, do you want to stick with adjourn?
Keep reading.
So are you laying it on the table, or do you want to adjourn? You've got a motion to adjourn, all I need is a time and a date.
I am making a motion to lay it upon the table.
This article?
This article.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? There being no second, the motion does not go forward. Article 21. Mr. Lieber, did you make your motion yet?
Not yet.
Okay. You almost had a heart attack there, huh?
Move that the town amend the general article, the general bylaws as set forth in Article 21.
Is there a second? Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. And we'll try to get through these next several articles, presentation portion, very quickly. So, in, in addition to the telegram format that was done to try and conserve tax dollars, there were copies, printed copies of the articles in much nicer format that were printed by the town administrator, so that hopefully we can get through things, and people can read the articles a little bit easier. So, the Wakefield Bylaw Review Committee has been very hard at work. We've actually had 27 meetings over the past roughly year and a half. There are seven members currently, and we've had wonderfully engaging discussions on a variety of topics. We've come up with 20 different sets of information to try and keep things compact for town meeting. These have been consolidated down into ultimately five articles that are the five articles before you. We solicited input from a variety of different, different people in the town, including private citizens, including various town boards, including a lot of employees, and other members of the public, and other interested parties, such as the Chamber of Commerce. Our goal was to review all of the bylaws, with the exception of the zoning bylaws. Zoning bylaws, we have deferred, and we, we may look at those last just for grammatical issues, but nothing of substance. So with that, Article 21 is the very first of these articles. This is one of two omnibus articles. The very first part of this, and you, you will notice in the printout itself, there's quite a few different pieces of it. It will remove several different, several different chapters that are no longer relevant. Chapters 14, 43, 47, 115, and Section 56, they are no longer needed within the town of Wakefield as bylaws themselves. Things such as the personnel policies and, and compensation is actually no longer needed, as that was actually deferred, referred directly to the town administrator by our charter. The bylaw predates the charter, so we no longer need the bylaw, and so our recommendation is to remove it. It's also making language clarification, such as the word treasurer in Chapter 62 is referred to sometimes as treasurer of the town, sometimes town treasurer. It makes the bylaws very hard to read for those people who have a need to read the bylaws from time to time, and so the idea is to make the language very consistent. In addition, it makes changes so that things are, have the intent, such as alcoholic beverages in Chapter 78. The way there's currently worded, there are no commas in the right places, and the intent of it was to allow for alcoholic beverages to be assigned, to be allowed in certain places. In its current reading, it's confusing at best with the proposed reading. There are a lot of commas. It makes it so that the board, the town council, if I, I will eventually get this right, the town council has the ability to assign permits and allow, allow beverages in appropriate places and times. In Chapter 100, Cemeteries is updated. It changes just some of the language to make things a little bit clearer. So those, that's a summary of the changes in Article 21 itself, and that it, the, the other changes they just want to, that put in here, it does affect actually the town meeting itself. You'll hear something very arcane in a moment to actually have the question be put before us. Often, we will hear things such as, "I move the question," which a town member made earlier in the meeting. According to our bylaws, that is actually not an acceptable form, although the town moderator has graciously allowed it. It is supposed to be, "May the, shall the main question be now put?" In over 20 years, I've never heard that actually be said, but that's the type of componentry that the bylaw review committee has reviewed, so that we can actually legally say, "I move the question," and that will have the desired effect.
That's it for 21?
That's it for 21.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion under Article 21?
Jonathan Chines, 34 Hopkins Street. Just a question, as I read through this, when this was first published in the warrant, I noticed that there are a couple of places that refer to the Board of Selectmen. Could you clarify, sort of, is that being changed as part of the change to town council that we voted on in the election last month, or...
There are, there are two, two components with that. The one, the town, town council, as Mr. Mullen may, may wish to addresses from the legally binding componentry. The board itself, the committee, has decided at this point, and our meetings were held before the operative vote to make it, to make the name change take effect, was actually concluded. So we tried to make the bylaws consistent. We have decided that we will make a further review of the actual bylaws to make appropriate changes for things such as Board of Selectmen, town council. That will be present for, most likely, the November town meeting.
All right, Tom, there's a, there's a general overall provision, correct? There's a general overall provision, provision now that says, if it says selectmen, it means...
In the Charter.
In, in the Charter, yeah. So there's sort of a stopgap measure for now, so... Any further discussion? This is majority, correct? 21 is majority. All in favor of the motion under Article 21 to amend the general bylaws as set forth in the warrant? Raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lieber, 22. Hold on. Let me just get, get the article up. To see that the town will vote to amend the general bylaws as follows, by amending Chapter 1, entitled General Provisions as Set Forth in the Article. Mr. Lieber?
I move that the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in Article 22.
Is there a second? Mr. Lieber?
So the purpose of Article 22, similar to Article 21, is an omnibus article for a variety of changes. These are all very minor policy changes. This is where we have changes of the word usage. It goes ahead, it, it does update violations and penalties. The, it, it... The...it makes it so that for general penalties where, unless otherwise specified, becomes $100 for a first offense, $200 for a second offense, $300 for subsequent offenses within a year. It makes it so that that's very clear for offenses, otherwise, the current wording is not clear nor consistent for various violations. It also allows for noncriminal disposition, which effectively means that if someone is in violation and there's a fine, it can be collected through a civil procedure as opposed to immediately going to a criminal proceeding, because a lot of people don't necessarily need a criminal record for what would be a minor violation. In addition, it goes ahead and it allows for things such as electronic notice to be given to people as appropriate, as long as they do acknowledge it. So, we're...right now, tickets and other things have to be given by mail. It does allow for cost savings as well. It also makes changes to the report section in Chapter 51. This goes ahead and changes the timing for the annual report, makes it so that it's much more conducive to the electronic age. The prior bylaw was written in the days when reports had to be physically given from...into the accounting office. So, it allows it, instead of being January 20th, to be March 15th. For a lot of offices and committees, they...it's not realistic to get their committee reports in by January 20th. March 15th becomes much more realistic. It also changes the publication date to be seven days before town meeting, whereas the current is 14 days. That gives the town administrator a bit more working time to actually work with the information as appropriate. In addition, it changes the...updates the names of several different departments, and it adds in additional components to our annual report, such as the Commission on Disability Issues, Veteran Services, and the Human Rights Commission. They will now have designated spots within the actual annual report. Those particular groups will now be codified within the town of Wakefield. In addition, it changes for Chapter 75 and 112, which are similar, parallel chapters. One deals with alarms, the other deals with the E-911 system. If people make...have false alarms and so forth, it goes ahead and defines who is actually responsible for handling if there's violations of that and abuse of the system. There used to be fees. We actually are removing fees for that section that are no longer appropriate. There was an appeal fee of $10 or designated. It has not been known to be collected, so those are being removed. For Chapter 108, it goes ahead and it changes the earth removal section to make that much clearer and removes terms that no longer apply. We have no idea what the word soil district supervisor and the county extension director actually mean, because those terms have not been used in law for quite a while. And so, it goes ahead and puts the state officials, which is the appropriate state officials as necessary. It also makes a correction, it's related to...somewhat related to a prior discussion, for the building permit fee schedule. This is actually just making the building permit fee schedule, as previously approved by town meeting, operative within the town itself. It changes the miscellaneous fees. This is towards the very end. These are miscellaneous fees for different things that the fire department in particular collects, and it changes some of the fees that are collected by various departments, mostly through the town clerk and the town council. The one fee that we did have a problem with of significance in here was the actual fee for the fortune tellers. We didn't want to actually print the fee, because if a fortune teller didn't know what the fee is, they probably weren't very good at their job. But according to town council, we were required to print it, so it is $50 for that particular fee. In addition, it does codify that video machine licenses are $100 and entertainment licenses are $50 per device. So, those are fees that have been collected and are part of standard practice. This just makes things much more consistent with how things are, cleaning up all of the bylaws to be consistent with current practice.
Mr. Sherman, I believe your FinCom has a recommendation? No. Has it in my program, scoring at home, yeah. Yeah.
Wow. Wow. Moment in history.
No, my mistake. What I heard was there were no change of the fees, you're just cleaning things up. So, the finance committee did approve the modifications of this article.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 22 in the South?
Jeffrey Quinn, 753 Main Street. In the first item for the amendment to Section 1-3, where you provide for a copy of the bylaws to be available online, online's terribly vague. I mean, that could mean the town website, or Facebook, or Snapchat. I mean, was the intent to be vague there with online?
The...it's a really good question. We debated some of the different terminology. The word online is intentionally vague, as it may change over time. It will always be available in person, and makes a copy to be also available online, depending upon what resources the town has. My understanding from the town administrator is that the current intent would be the town website, but over time, that may change. It may also be available in multiple places.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion under Article 22? Mr. Clardy.
Thank you. That was my job. Mr. Lieber, I was wondering, it says here in...well, there's a five there. I don't know what section I'm in, but it says, "Any person who refuses to comply with an order of any town official or officer or so on and so forth should be fined $300 a day, each day or portion thereof, that any violation continues, and will constitute a separate offense." Is there any upper limit on the civil fines that you want to collect?
Yeah, by statute, under Chapter 40, we cannot have a bylaw that imposes more than $300 per day as a fine.
No, that's not the question. Excuse me. The question was, it's 300 a day or each email. So, that's $3,000 for 10 days, or whatever, and $9,000 for 30 days.
Oh, you're asking, is there a cumulative limit?
Thank you.
There is not.
There's not. One other question?
Sure.
Will the towns be seeking to take people's houses if they don't pay these civil fines?
Tom, can you answer that? I have been town council since 1994, and I have never attempted to take anyone's house.
Thank you. But the civil penalties do accumulate, and they are liable to collection at some point, I imagine. I mean, will you be using collection agencies, or perhaps in the future?
We use Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very uncomfortable with, you know, $90,000 fines, or whatever you want to do.
Then behave.
Right.
Pretty simple. Sorry.
It says, "I don't know what any town official is going to tell me to do." And it just says that anyone can tell me to do anything. Thank you.
Any further discussion under Article 22? There being no discussion. Motion before you is that the town amend the general bylaws as described in the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 9 of the general bylaws entitled Boards, Committees, and Commissions as follows and set forth in the article. Mr. Lieber.
Move that the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in Article 23.
Is there a second? Mr. Lieber.
Thank you. Article 23 makes a substantial set of changes to the town governance, and that's part of the reason why this one is broken out, this and the next two are broken out, for independent discussion and deliberation. What this goes ahead and does is it changes the finance committee vacancy appointments to be consistent with the intent of the charter, as we can best understand it. So, that when there is a vacancy on the finance committee, it will actually be assigned by the chair of the finance committee, if they're...the town...the head of the town council and the town moderator. So, the three of them will meet up to appoint a new person to the finance committee when there's a vacancy. In addition, it goes ahead, and as you read through it, it changes the composition of the permanent building committee, which is currently a nine-member board. It will keep it at nine members, but change it from nine consistent members to six consistent members and three that are assigned for each project based upon the user agency. So, if there is, say, a fire station, or a police station, or, say, a police station addition that would be underneath the permanent building committee, then six members would be consistent for across multiple projects, and three would be owned...would be assigned by the user agency, which in this particular case would probably be the police department and actually ultimately get their charge from the town council, who's responsible for the building. If it's a school, then three would be actually appointed by the school committee. If there was a change to a library, it'd be three by the library trustees and so forth. So, the idea is that the user agency will have a voting membership on the permanent building committee for each project, but six members would actually retain the consistency of expertise across projects. So, it takes the best of the various pieces, tries to address some of the issues that have come up with various projects over the years since it was originally put in. So, that's some of the language that you'll see in Sections 98 and 910. In addition, it goes ahead and it adds in a section of governance, and that's Sections 17 through 27. The purpose behind this is to make things very clear for those of us who are a part of the government, and those to encourage additional people to join those of us in our wonderful town governance. There are hundreds of volunteers, and the idea is to make expectations very clear. It goes ahead and it puts in things such as that meeting minutes will actually be posted online when committees have websites. Meeting minutes will be sent to the town clerk, so that anyone can request them. You don't have to chase down...figure out who the chair of a particular committee may be, chase it down. It makes things a lot easier for... It also goes ahead and makes things easier for the various committees. In the case of a member who's no longer able to serve appropriately, if a person misses five meetings, then they will be deemed abandoned their position. If it's an adjudicating board, if they miss five meetings over the course of a year, then they can be replaced by the town council as appropriate. The idea behind that is for certain adjudicating boards, such as zoning board of appeals, conservation commission, there are some legal requirements that they have a certain number of members at all times, and this way, it makes it much easier to keep that consistent. As people, our volunteers, that's recognized. It makes things so that it's very easy to keep the governance consistent. It also makes things so that when bodies are created, that there's a charter for each public body, so that people know what they're actually supposed to do, what the limits of their body is supposed to do, so that we don't get bodies that start working on things that are inappropriate. The last thing that it does, it designates some parameters for public hearings, again, to set expectations for members of the public, as well as set expectations for those boards that have public hearings, so that anyone who wishes to address a public hearing is given an amount of time, and it is limited, and it's always subject to the chair being in charge of a particular hearing, so that people do not get out of hand. Thank you.
23, you're all bound yourself on this. Any discussions under 23? In the North.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
And you are?
Charles Tarbell, 23 Morrison Road, Wakefield, Massachusetts.
Good evening, Charles.
I'm also a member of the permanent building committee. And one of the things that this article does is really change what the permanent building committee is. So, Mr. Lieber, I really...I was shocked to hear that you met for a year and a half and met with a lot of people. Can you tell me who you met with on the permanent building committee? Here, I can help. I can help you, because I'm a member of the permanent building committee, and I've asked everybody on the permanent building committee who you met with. Nobody is the answer to that. Your committee was in place for a year and a half, and you didn't find it necessary to talk to anybody on the committee that you want to change. I don't get that. You want so much for inclusion and participation and involvement. I don't know how you can make a recommendation when you don't really understand what we do. Okay, so, that's one point. The second point is, for all school projects, there already has to be an advisory committee. For the Galvin, there was a huge advisory committee. For the Walton, there's been an advisory committee. So, I mean, I commend the amount of time you've put in for the minutia on all this other stuff that you've cleaned up. However, I think on this article, you guys missed the boat. Okay, we have a nine-member committee right now with two alternates. You know, we always strive to have people come and join committees, and you need that amount of numbers. We also had projects, you know, there wasn't a permanent building committee for a lot of years, and, you know, the Dolberg School opened without an air conditioning unit on the roof. There were issues at the Woodville. Since the founding of the permanent building committee and John Encarnicio, you know, we have managed to build a building like this. Have there been problems? Certainly. But this was a $75 million project that came in on time, under budget. So, I think in this one, you missed it. I don't think the permanent building committee needs any fixing. And I think if you had come and actually done your research, which shocks me that you didn't, you would have maybe agreed with us. So, I commend the amount of work that the committee has done. However, I think you really missed the boat on this, and I don't think this body should support Article 23.
In the South, Mr. Hadfield.
Dave Hadfield, 23 Butternut Road. So, I'm also on the same article, 9-25...or section 9-25. Can you clarify where the absence from the meetings, or from the committee meetings of five consecutive, and the five or more meetings over the course of 12 months for the ZBA, where those came from?
Sure. The number five itself actually comes from the charter and from the prior...the prior section on the finance committee, where people...a person who missed five consecutive members...five consecutive meetings of the finance committee was given the...was deemed to have effectively abandoned their position. Use slightly different language, but that's where it comes from. And so, the idea is to keep it consistent with the intent of the charter, so that there was a time bounding, as well as making it a reasonable number.
Okay. I understand that, you know, the ZBA has to have a limit, and as adjudicated body, that had to be handled separately. And over the course of a year, you know, we want everyone at all the meetings, but it can happen, other commitments, work, travel, sickness, et cetera. But on the other one, the five consecutive, it's automatic. It seems like it's automatic, and there's no consideration for other commitments or excused absences versus unexcused absences, where they just don't tell anyone and they don't show up. I could see someone essentially abandoning their post at that point. But if they do have a commitment, work, or travel, or otherwise, and they've notified the chairman of said committee that, hey, there's a special circumstance, I don't think they should have to give up the post. I just...it sounds automatic, and I'm just not in agreement with that. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Bertrand.
Joseph Bertrand, 7 Shawway Circle. I'm the chairman of the permanent building committee, and I would have to repeat many of the statements that Mr. Tarbell has made previously, that you, committee, ask...talked to no one in our committee. You made changes to the finance committee. I'm on the finance committee, and you didn't even talk to the chairman of the finance committee. You never contacted me, the chairman of the permanent building committee, to make changes to the permanent building committee. You know, the old adage is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Our committee worked, I don't know, for several hard years to create this building, to build this building. $75 million, under budget, on time, and it should change, that committee? We're presently doing the Walton. We are on time, hopefully under budget. We think so. And we should change that? To do what you want to do, right now, as of Monday? To do what you want to do, right now, as of Monday, you commissioned our committee to work on an eight million dollar renovation to the police station. According to this new bylaw, as chairman, I'm going to have to have one committee handle the Walton, adjourn, and then bring in another, three other people to do the, to the public safety building. It's a cumbersome owners that you put on, on a committee of volunteers. As I said, if it's not broke, don't fix it. We're working fine. I am honored to be the chairman of that committee. These individuals have worked long and hard. For how many years? Since nineteen ninety-four. I mean, two thousand and four, we've worked on this. There is no need to change it. Another issue, and I think it was one that was just mentioned. We had a chairman of our committee who was very ill. He missed five consecutive meetings, so he should be abandoned. We have a gentleman who does construction work. His schedule changed from the night, from the day shift to the night shift, so he, his position should be abandoned, because there's no excuses. Someone who is, we are volunteers. I have served in committees in this town for over thirty years. And there are times when people can't attend. And if they do it for five consecutive times, their position is abandoned. That's absurd. Lastly, the thirty years I've been on committees, and the micromanaging, management of this, of the last section is equally absurd, where you have to give charters and positions and everything. We're volunteers. We are proud and happy to serve the town. I ask town meeting to vote no on Article number twenty-three, because it doesn't make sense.
Any further discussion?
Jonathan Chines, thirty-four Hopkins Street. I just want to speak just for a moment about the, the five consecutive meetings and that provision of the bylaws. I, I think it's an important point to recognize that while it is automatic that the position comes up for appointment, I don't believe the bylaw change that's proposed would prevent the appointing authority from reappointing that person. And so, under the circumstances that you have someone who maybe because of illness had to miss five consecutive meetings or some other reason, there is still a mechanism for them to continue serving if the appointing authority, as I understand the bylaw change, selects them to continue serving. And so, from that standpoint, I, I'd certainly encourage support for that change. I think it's important to make sure that the committees that we do have, have members who are able to serve, and if circumstances prevent someone from attending a number of meetings, and they are temporary, and that person is able to continue serving after that temporary change, it would seem to me that this change would actually allow that to happen. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Hi, Phil Renzi, eight Morgan Ave. I'm also a member of the Permanent Building Committee since spring of two thousand and sixteen, my first time serving on a committee. And I don't believe this change makes much sense. If, if this committee, if these changes are made, and there are two or three projects all of a sudden on the table, you're now having to bring in nine different people. I have a concern on continuity in doing that. I also have a concern that there's actually nine people willing to serve, based on the several re-advertisements for this one committee as it stands. I wish more people volunteered in this town and in other areas of life, but it just doesn't happen. So I would recommend that this be voted down. And to the previous comment, I can't confirm that at least I was not talked to, and none of the other committee members all agree, that no one was talked to regarding these changes for any advice or information about what we do. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
If, if I can just address a few of the, a few of the issues that have come up.
Quickly.
All, all of the committees that were directly affected were actually contacted. Fin, Finance Committee did ha, did have someone, not necessarily after all the changes were made, but there was, as we reviewed the process at the very beginning, there were emails and so forth that were actually sent to each of the chairs at that time. And for the Permanent Building Committee, no changes were recommended directly by, from the Permanent Building Committee. The idea behind allowing the voting members for, in the Permanent Building Committee itself, the idea behind allowing specific members from the user agency to have a voting purpose is so that we actually have people for, from the police department and assigned by town council that have a direct vested interest in the police station, have the ability to work on that project. Whereas people from the school committee can assign people who have a direct vested interest for school buildings. Those are different projects, materially different, and there would still be a commonality across those projects. As it relates to the attendance requirement, the, as the gentleman just stated correctly, if someone's position is abandoned, such as due to not being able to attend, there are two ways that this is, can be addressed, and it's actually built into the bylaw itself. One is that they can attend remotely, even for a short period of time, for any meeting, and it resets the clock. That even if the town council does not explicitly approve remote participation, there is a carve-out specifically to allow that. So if someone is working, they realize they can't, they're injured, and they can't make meetings very often, they can call in for a little bit. As long as they coordinate with the chair, that can be accommodated, and that will allow them to retain in the position. But if they can't attend the meetings, then the work of the town still needs to get accomplished, and that means the position should be opened up for that person to either be reappointed by the appointing authority, if appropriate, or so that someone else can fill those shoes. We want the work to ultimately get done. This, this has undergone extraordinarily careful vetting. This particular section was reviewed about twelve different times by the Bylaw Review Committee in depth. We went through these various aspects. So it really is quite significant for, to better the town, and a lot of, of input was received. For the Permanent Building Committee in particular, the idea that, of having consistency is important. The idea of letting user agencies have a say in how they actually get their projects done is incredibly important. So that way we don't have people who are focused on a, on a police station or a school, all of a sudden be designing a library, which has very different requirements. And so that way, we actually have the user agencies, not just in an advisory capacity, but actually having a seat at the table. Thank you.
Anybody else? First time? First time?
Good evening. Ed Dobrowski, fifteen Chestnut Street. I understand what the Permanent Building Committee is saying. It's disappointing to hear that they had not been more engaged in this process, and so much of this impacts the work that you do, and I think the insight that you could provide in helping to shape any changes would have been very helpful. But that all being said, we have this article in total. I might suggest that we not throw the baby out with the bathwater here. And if we look at Article twenty-three specifically, it's, it's labeled as D, Article five, nine-dash-eight, the suggestion that relates to the Permanent Building Committee. Perhaps a way to resolve the issue that is, has been raised by Permanent Building Committee but maintains and preserves the good work that has been done would be to just eliminate that modification or change, but leave the rest of the Article twenty-three intact. It allows for a lot of opportunity here that we don't currently have in terms of flexibility with participation by other means. I think it would encourage others to be involved with our committee work, and as everyone's aware, you know, we're looking for people to be involved. And so this is a time in the twenty-first century where we have to be able to accommodate people's schedules. And if, if at your office, you're able to participate in meetings remotely, if you're traveling or the like, but can still be a valuable participant in a town committee, then I think we should afford folks that opportunity. So that, that would be my suggestion.
All right. Can I clear this up, Ed? Yeah. Um, yeah. Are you making a motion?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, hold on. Ed, are you making the motion?
I'm happy to make it, or if someone else is.
Yeah.
All right, ahead, Ed.
I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and make that motion, then. So we would.
So you're, let's be clear. You're making a motion on the Permanent Building Committee, not the consecutive meeting thing.
That's correct. Yes, indeed. So everything, what I'm saying is, we would maintain twenty-three, but we would strike what is on your first page, D.
And E. I just checked with Mr. Mullen. That also, that, that is part and parcel, so.
Okay.
So your motion should be to delete Section C, or Section D and E, correct? Mr. Mullen, correct? Yeah. Why doesn't he just, do you have the little handout? Yeah. Why don't you put a little notation on that and hand it to Mr. Mullen?
Sure.
So it's in writing. All right. You can do that now. Any discussion on the motion, Mr. Dobrowski's motion to delete D and E? Mr. Bertrand?
Thank you. As Chairman, Joe Bertrand, Seventh Someway Circle. As chairman of the Permanent Building Committee, I respectfully request that you approve this amendment and delete that. Since there was no vetting, there was no communication with the Permanent Building Committee.
Got it. Any further discussion? Yeah. Yeah, just stopped there and no.
Thank you. Jonathan Chines, again, thirty-four Hopkins Street. Just a question as to, i, is there a reason why both Section D and E need to be deleted, or could they stand on their own?
Mr. Mullen, why does E have to go? Well, it's, it's, it's part and parcel. It says, it says, it's, it's the second half. It's this three-member advisory committee, so they both need to go.
Both, both D and E have to do with the Permanent Building Committee.
Yeah.
No, I understand that. I guess my question was, could you keep the nine permanent members of the Permanent Building Committee? It's a lot of permanence in that, and also have sort of a, an addition of advisory members for a particular project?
You're, you're reducing the number, correct?
Well, you could do a lot of things, but you'd need the wording of an amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment to delete Sections D and E under Article twenty-three? There being no further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Back on the main motion to approve the now de-neuter, de-permanently built, building committed. Article twenty-three, any further discussion? There being no further discussion. This is just majority, Mr. Mullen? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-four. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter one oh four of the general bylaws entitled Dogs and Other Animals by replacing, follows, A, I just have to read this part, by replacing the words as canine control officer. Ken, you are moving on up, brother. I like it, really. It's, it's a new day. And, 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 and the rest of the article as set forth. Mr. Lieber?
Move that the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in Article twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. First, very cute puppy, very important. The purpose of Article twenty-four is to update the canine laws, which have been previously applicable only to dogs, to make them more consistent with state law and cover animals in general. It updates some of the fees for, we happen to be very fortunate in this town that we actually have a local kennel for emergency purposes. It goes ahead, makes the charges consistent with the cost for that. It also updates the, some of the fees for things such as off-leash violations and other violations. It makes the first fine different from all, almost all, everything else in the town, only fifty dollars. Second offense within a year is, one is two hundred, third offense is three hundred. The purpose behind this is so that if someone does have a violation, it's not such an onerous fine. It makes it reasonable, also makes it reasonable to enforce. It also goes ahead and adds in a, a town violation. If someone is bitten, this is consistent with state law as well. So right now, if, if someone is bitten and it has happened, then there isn't a violation necessarily in the town. If someone is bitten on pro, on public property, this goes ahead and corrects it. Among the most important changes that this bylaw does has to do with the dog park. We have a wonderful dog park that the town council designated and has opened. Under the current, really word, currently worded bylaw, your dog has to be on a leash within the dog park. This goes ahead and allows the town council to assign dog parks as they see fit, which means that we currently have one area that would be designated as a dog park. They could assign others as the town council deems appropriate, and under whatever, under whatever rules and regulations as specified by the town council, those areas could be operated off-leash, as long as the dog is under reasonable control. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman, I think you're up on this one.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this one.
Any discussion under Article twenty-four?
May I go ahead? Very good. Jeffrey Quinn, seven five three Main Street. And Item D, the, the offense, the violation in question is a, a dog bite, is that correct? Any person violating any provision of this chapter shall be punished by a fine of, that's for bites, is that correct?
For, and, and or Section D, that would be for any viol, any violation.
Any violation. And what are the, what are the fines currently?
The current fine is twenty-five dollars, although there is not currently a town fine for biting.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any further discussion? Do you get a new uniform? Okay, cool. All right. Any further discussion? Oh, oh, move it along. Yeah, Mr. Budget One Night. Yikes. All in favor of the motion under Article twenty-four, raise your hands. All opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter one seventy-five of the general bylaws entitled Streets and Sidewalks by revising Article three entitled Snow and Ice as set forth in your article. Mr. Lieber?
Move that the town amend the general bylaws as set forth in Article twenty-five.
Second. Mr. Lieber?
Thank you. The purpose of, of this particular article, nice that we're having this discussion in May and not, say, March, i, is to update the snow and ice sections of our bylaw that have been woefully out of date. It, this has been a very long process. More importantly, it's been an incredibly deliberative process with input from the Director of Public Works, input from the police chief, input from town administrator, as well as others. And we've taken the best of many different towns and cities' bylaws and to come up with a bylaw that ultimately the Bylaw Review Committee believes will suit the needs of Wakefield in a very responsible manner. The purpose behind this is to delineate it very specifically, it's most readable in the handout as opposed to the telegram format, is to make it so that we have town-wide coverage of the ability to have safe streets, safe sidewalks, particularly for commercial properties across town. This will actually have a requirement that all commercial properties clear their sidewalks, including the curb cuts, by, by their properties within twelve hours of the finishing of a storm. So twelve hours of the cessation of a storm, there's a requirement that they be, that the area be clean. This does not impact private residences at all. The current bylaw only covers certain streets and certain sides of streets, all in downtown. Nowhere in Greenwood is covered by the current bylaw. Nowhere in on North Avenue is covered by the current bylaw. This goes ahead, this specifically updates it so that any commercial use property, this is not a zoning issue, it's a usage proper, usage of the property, is covered. In addition to large multifamily dwellings, that's five or more units. Specifically in the design and intent is that individual families, individual people in very small units will not actually have responsibility. Further, the responsibility lies with the property owner. The current bylaw actually assigns the, the responsibility, especially for commercial areas, on both the owner, as well as the tenant, and the person who's there. This makes it so that it's very clearly on the, the owner of the parcel who is ultimately responsible. They may or may not enter into private agreements to try and designate that responsibility. That becomes an issue between a landlord and the property owner itself. Penalties for violations become two hundred dollars per violation. Each day becomes a separate violation. As long as, as people follow the bylaw, obviously there's no violations. This is done so in the future, if there is adoption of another law. This is done so in the future, if there is adoption of another law, Chapter 40 U, then there would be the ability to make the collections even easier. Another change that this makes is that it actually expands the enforcement. The current bylaw is rarely enforced directly because the police department has very limited resources during storms and immediately after storms to worry so much about fining people and on the limited streets for enforcement. This goes ahead and actually is designed so that the Director of Public Works or their designee will also have the ability to do enforcement. The way that the bylaw was structured is that it's inverse to the actual collection of refuse and recycling. So that the, the people who are actually out and supervisors who are doing the potential enforcement know which properties do not currently collect the refuse and recycling, so they will know which ones are actually, actually applied for this particular bylaw. And that way, we ultimately will have the goal of having much safer streets, much safer sidewalks, so that people can actually get around town in a much safer manner. Thank you.
So the Finance Committee went through this and for the most part agrees with everything with one very large exception. While the Finance Agreement agrees with 25, it feels that the 12 hours to remove snow and ice from the sidewalks is too quick. For example, if a storm ends, whatever that means, asking businesses to clear it up by 7:00 AM if the storm ends at 7:00 PM is asking too much. You could have people out there at 5:00 in the morning with their snow blowers, waking up the downtown neighborhood for those that live downtown. And we just feel that that is, is too much. Therefore, and it was unanimous vote, to amend, the Finance Committee moves to amend Article 25 by substituting 24 hours for 12 hours. And for those of you following along in the big book, it is on page 41, line 11, going down. And if you have the, the handout, it's under subsection B, Commercial Property, about five rows down. That is the Finance Committee motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the amendment? There being no discussion. The motion before you is to amend the article under, or the motion under Article 25 to Section B from 12 hours to 24 hours. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Did you have a point of order or you just?
I have a point of order, there's 12 in two sections.
Oh, okay. So, Mr. Sherman, your motion was to amend it in both section, wasn't it? Where else is it? B and C. All right, let's redo it. B and C, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Is that a point of order or you just waving to me?
I'm just waving to you.
Oh.
Oh, you're voting no? Oh, okay. He's an aspiring curmudgeon, I know him. Mr. McLaughlin, back on the main motion.
Bob McLaughlin, 376 Water Street. Words as enforcement by police and/or DPW. There's also another enforcement agency, it's the Conservation Commission. There's several commercial properties in Wakefield over the years that have been approved by various boards, but the, most of them have a, a lot of them have a snow management plan. And I believe, I just need some clarification, I believe the Conservation Commission is involved in that. So, for instance, there's commercial areas where if there's too much snow in the parking lot, they don't have storage areas, it has to be removed. Or the snow has to be put in certain areas for snow storage, particularly certain supermarkets in town. Anyway, it has to be, I was just curious whether that, that in fact is the Conservation Commission's job in here. I believe it is.
Mr. Mullen. When there's an order of conditions that requires that snow be dealt with in one way or another, and generally that would be out of fear that the snow would be contaminated with salt and other things and you don't want to put it into the wetlands, then the Conservation Commission would be the enforcing agency, but they would do that through an enforcement order. And that would be to enforce their order of conditions, not to enforce this bylaw. I think it would be a mistake to add the Conservation Commission as an enforcing agent in, under this bylaw.
I see. Okay, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Are you up on this?
No.
Okay. Yes.
Dan Sherman, 16 High Street.
Oh, no, no, Charles, I think was up before you. Charles.
Chip Tarbell, 23 Morrison Road. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Since Mr. Stinson is becoming the new snow cop, I'd like to hear from him on this motion since it was represented that he pretty much wrote this or was very involved in it. Thank you.
Do you have a question for him or you just want to know his thoughts?
Do you agree with this? Do you feel good about it? And do you think it will help the town?
Rick, do you feel good about this?
Yes to all three.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Sherman, 16 High Street. I am curious about the very last fine, which is $300 per violation for putting snow on public ways. Do we have a current fine for that?
Mr. Mullen, do you know that? There would be bonus points involved if you knew that off the top of your head.
Yeah, under Section 175-9, it says, "No person shall move or remove snow or ice from private lands to any public street, sidewalk, or common land. Each violation shall be punished by a fine of $100 for the first offense, 200 for the second offense within a year, and 300 for a third or subsequent offense."
Personally, every now and then I see people putting snow out in the roadway and it absolutely infuriates me. And I'm tempted to ask for an amendment increasing it beyond $300 to something greater than that, but I'll defer that until more research. Mr. Stinson, you don't do that fine as a police fine at this point? And I'm wondering how many, how many times we've cited anybody for throwing snow on the public way?
We do not do that fine. That would be under the Police Department. However, we do track them down, we communicate regularly with the police on duty so that we can kind of try to catch that person and hopefully make them do a self-correction. So we hope not to issue any fines, but we do track that down a lot.
Give Dan one of those new radios during the storm. He's, he's irate about this.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
Careful if you're in Dan's neighborhood, keep it on your property.
I will not amend, or a motion for amendment.
For what it's worth, the committee would love to have had a larger, a larger fine, but Mr. Mullen has advised us that the most that we are allowed to assess as a town is $300 per violation. So this just makes it from the first violation of $100 to all violations of $300. Hopefully that will be enough to discourage. It also keeps the enforcement of this particular section with, exclusively with the Police Department. That way we don't have a conflict, a potential conflict of a DPW person with a likely to be angry driver.
In the north.
Matthew Jewett, 35 Byron Street. I, I just had a couple questions, generally in favor of this. The multifamily dwellings, condominium complexes are sort of a slightly different flavor and I don't see them addressed here. So one of the, there's, there's two exceptions I'm running into pretty regularly with snow removal. And one of them has to do with the sidewalks abutting condominium complexes where their frontage is not getting cleared.
Mr. Mullen.
So are they addressed anywhere in this?
Mr. Mullen, is, is condominiums multi-dwelling? Yeah, they can be.
I, I understand they can be. The reason I'm asking is for that distinction is, is they can be, but they also can not be depending on the interpretation. So I'm looking for an interpretation.
Here comes your interpreter.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we'd actually run into a legal problem if we tried to enforce differently depending on the form of ownership. We, we can't say you have to own your property this way rather than through condominium ownership. What this says is the owner of any building designed or occupied as a residence by more than four families. So it looks at the building and it asks how many families are in there. And I understand that one of the reasons why four was chosen is because that's the cutoff for trash pickup. Okay, so the DPW, which is one of the enforcers, knows which buildings those are.
So if you've got, if you've got duplex townhouses, those aren't, those aren't considered covered by this particular?
I don't think so, no.
That's right.
Okay, that's why I wanted to ask. So secondly, another point of confusion along the same lines is some of these are on main drags like Albion Street. And often they're off the hook because the town plows them. But over this past winter, you could not get from Jordan past the Doyle School to Gould for a large part of the winter. And what happens is, I understand the DPW gets stuck and does its best to remove the snow, but when the, when the piles are getting at the corner of, say, Gould and Albion, what, what ends up happening is it's impassable and you end up with people and kids walking out into Albion Street. And one of the condo complexes in specific that I'm talking about is the one that went in across essentially from there, which had the same thing. They weren't taking care of the snow from essentially the corner of Jordan down to, essentially down to Gould. You couldn't get through most of that.
Can you address that, Mr. Stinson?
We're gonna first, we don't want to issue a fine if we don't have to.
I'm not, I'm not, again, trying to be punitive.
So we're gonna try to work with those property owners to resolve that. There are times in the year, there's gonna be so much snow out there that you're not gonna be able to remove it and you make an opening through that. And it's really getting the opening through that embankment. We may have to help at times. You know, one of the things that does happen is most snowstorms, we go out right after the storm and do sidewalks. When we get a huge snowstorm, it may not be for a day or two later because staff needs to get rest. And there could be storms, this is really for the storms that after the sidewalks are cleared, people who don't salt and sand that should would be impacted. We want them to salt and sand and take care of that. Also, small storms where there's two inches of snow, three inches of snow, we may not go out and clear sidewalks because we could do more damage with the equipment we have than what we're accomplishing.
Okay. So one of these complexes plowed up berms across the sidewalks and you couldn't get, you physically couldn't get over the berm. The amount of snow in the ground wasn't that much, but because they cleared their lot across it, you couldn't get through and that was one of the places. Anyway, the other place that consistently becomes a problem if you guys get backed up, and I understand you are taking care of a lot of snow, is a section of Jordan that runs down to the senior center. It's a long run there and that's a road that gets a fair amount of cut-through traffic and you, you have the same situation where you get people walking in Jordan because they can't get down there. But that one's on the town, there's no, that sidewalk is, there's no residential anywhere, it's a senior center on Jordan.
Correct. And there are, so everyone knows, we don't do, and I have to look to see exactly what we do in that area, but we do all sidewalks in town.
I understand that. And that's one of the inconsistencies that makes it confusing for some of these people where they say, well, the town's gonna come through and get it because it usually does. Anyway, I don't need to take more time, I just was curious if we were gonna have some teeth on some of these.
Okay. In the north.
Me wall, 23 Elm Street. Just a question for Tom. I think this is a great idea, I'd love to see this happen. My only concern is how you can force people to shovel property that's not their own. If that's gonna be an issue going down the road when you're trying to find people, basically forcing them to do labor and not paying them for it.
Can you answer that?
Well, the existing bylaw does that already. It just does it in a, probably a less consistent manner. So the Attorney General approved that bylaw and though we haven't had to use a lot of enforcement powers, I wouldn't have any compunction about trying to do that in Malden District Court if we had to.
Any further discussion? The motion before you under Article 25 is to amend the general bylaws as set forth in Mr. Lieber's motion. All in, pardon?
As amended.
As amended. Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to thank CAT once again. They do a phenomenal job. Just to give them a little plug, they have their little Movies by the Lake thing coming up this summer. They left us here, probably not for me to go to them. Men in Black, Jaws, E.T., Wonder Woman. Speaking of Wonder Woman, do you have a motion? That's cute, isn't it?
I move that we dissolve the May 2018 town meeting.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? You sure you don't want to oppose this, Dave? Okay, thanks, good. All right. By the way, I stole aspiring curmudgeon from Tommy Mullen, I want to just footnote that. Thank you. It's his expression and I did steal it. Aspiring curmudgeon, I stole that from you. Thank you.